I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting of December 14th, 2022, has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the city clerk and with the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the city clerk and was forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on December 9th, 2022. The regular meeting of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne is now in session. Ms. Medina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Weimer?
Here.
Mr. La Palusa?
Here. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our first item up is an ordinance referring the redevelopment plan to the planning board for consistency review for the redevelopment plan for the property located at 69-73 Lefonti Way and adopting said redevelopment plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, which was introduced and passed at first reading at the meeting held July 20th, 2022, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at the meetings of August 17th, which second reading was postponed to the meetings of September 21st, October 19th, and November 9th. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing and a resolution given the ordinance second reading.
Okay, and before we move forward, I spoke at the caucus about this, that there were many, many changes to this redevelopment plan, numerous enough that it really couldn't be with a straight face be considered just a consistency review. And as I said at the caucus, it would be likely that this would be replaced by another ordinance, and in fact, it is. Oh eight would be the replacement for this. So the protocol here would be to have this not moved so that it dies a natural death.
Okay. Oh two is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 16 Rent Control, which was introduced and passed at first reading at the meeting held November 9th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 14th. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing and a resolution given the ordinance second reading is moved by council member Carroll. Mr. La Palusa, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 16 Rent Control. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Okay. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Don't move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh three is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 17 Property Maintenance, which was introduced and passed at first reading at the meeting held November 9th, was published on the, published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 14th. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing and a resolution moved by council member Carroll, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 17 Property Maintenance. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh four is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 21 Health Regulations, which was introduced and passed at first reading at the meeting held, reading at the meeting held November 9th, and was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 14th. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing and a resolution moved by council member Perez, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 21 Health Regulations. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Any questions? No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Some move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh five is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 14th. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing and a resolution is moved by council member La Palusa, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic. And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Yes, Ms. Kuduski.
Good evening, Melissa Kuduski Rodriguez, 148 Ave., UF. By some means, I might be stretching this, so please tell me if I am, okay? So regarding the parking, I kind of did a little bit of research, understanding we're just controlling where cars are parking. I want to give a good example as to why I have some concerns. This is good, but just how can we maybe apply it across other fields and like other areas in Bayonne? So currently, many developments, as many of you have put into place restrictions on parking permits due to some developments, and there's controlled parking. Well, after 5:00 PM, there's no enforcement. But many of these developments, as I hope some of you may be aware, already charge a parking fee that the resident has to pay to live there or they cannot park there. So what I've started to experience, at least in my area, they have to park on the street because they do not pay the $190 per month parking fee. So what it's doing is, we have tons of residents moving in, which is great. We have great developments, not against it, but it's causing some other issues that I don't think we really planned for. Like, I don't know if you knew that, and if they're private, they could do whatever they want, correct? I don't know if you knew they were going to charge residents $190 for parking per month. Hey, I don't get out of work till 5:30. I'm just going to go park my car in the street. And that's kind of what we're starting to see. I spoke to two of my neighbors, and they're like, yeah, I'm not paying for that parking. I'm going to park right here. Our family has three vehicles, taking up a spot on the street. So I don't know if there's an immediate solution, but maybe it's something we can think about. How do we either extend the ordinance past 5:00 PM and on to the weekends? I have no problem with that as a resident. You give me a ticket, I didn't have a parking permit. Too bad, too sad for me, right? Or is that something, when you go forward making developments, when you're talking about these contracts, that you have to agree that they can't do this? You know, either you waive your fee. I don't know what you have control of. I'm just speaking as a concerned resident, where people who have property there can no longer park. So I don't kind of, I would just love to know your opinion on that and what we can do to maybe tackle that for the residents that are experiencing those in those areas. Not all of the developments have that fee, by the way.
Sure.
But now we're restricting where other cars can park. It's kind of getting a little airy, so I don't know if you have an opinion on that.
Sure. Um, did you have something else to add or you want me to answer that first?
I'll answer that first, thank you.
Okay. As of 2015, we changed the law that says that people who live in multiple unit apartments have to use the parking or they're not going to get a permit to park on the streets or they're taking a chance. As far as 5 o'clock, the parking authority goes past 5 o'clock. So if they're not coming in your area, you can get in contact with one of us and we'll go and speak to the parking authority and make sure they come around your area. The problem is that, and this is where I've spoken to the parking authority, Jane, who's the director of parking, I had a conversation with her recently, to try and get the people who are renting and leasing these apartments to explain to these people, you're not going to be able to get a parking permit, you have to take the parking or you're subject to getting tickets. They're not doing that. They're not following up on that. But that should be something that's included in the package, either included in the rent and say it's already in there, or they have to be honest with the people and explain to them, when you go to the city, you're not going to get it. And a lot of these people from out of town, they don't know how all this works, they've never been to City Hall, they don't know how to come or contact us. So it's very, very difficult. So what I want to do is, I would like to at least get a letter out to these leasing agents or whoever's taking care of that and explain to them that they should tell any prospective tenants about the parking situation. You live in this building, this building is subject to not having street parking. So it behooves you, obviously, to take that. Now whether they actually tell every tenant, there's, it's impossible for us to check it, but this is the issue that we're having, and I think that's the solution.
Thank you for that. And I guess a second- I think, Melissa, let me just add, I apologize. I do believe there's some consideration being given right now to 24-hour enforcement of the parking permit rules. So that's, that's up for consideration right now also, so there's more to come.
And in fact, the, I'm looking at the ordinance, there is no 5 o'clock time limitation. It is a 20, it says three hours on any streets within the designated areas. And there are definitely some places where-
That are less enforced than others.
Well, I think it, it's more egregious, more egregious violations in some areas than others. I think the enforcement, they're doing the best they can, but there probably has to be more of a commitment to enforcing in the after hours because there are places that have a severe violation of this. I've, I've looked at this.
Yeah.
And specifically, I think you live on the east side, right?
Uh, we're, I'll be super public, it's the Edge Apartments. It's $190 per month. They are very transparent on their website, that parking is available for an additional fee. Two of the neighbors I have spoken to are pretty friendly in the area.
They are transparent or they're not?
They are. It says parking available for additional fee, right there, and with two asterisks. It's like, they make it pretty clear, and I think the problem goes into the weekends too, right? Because we have the weekdays, but the weekends, and I know you live fairly close to me, and the weekends are- You have one parking spot with my house, too. Correct, I, right?
Yeah, it's a problem for everybody, right?
I just don't know if it's extending that ordinance, right? Or looking at maybe these buildings, I'm sorry to sound like we're targeting, but let's be realistic, if we know that these are the buildings, then maybe that's where we need to hyper-focus some of the enforcement. Listen, I mean, it's tack-
We're working on that as well.
It's money in your pockets, it's money in the City of Bayonne's pocket. So thank you for starting to consider that. I'm sure the residents will be very grateful, so thank you for your time.
No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh six is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 14th. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing and a resolution moved by council member La Palusa, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Any questions on oh six? And on that, I will take no protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Don't move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Good evening, you know, my name is Hector Gonzalez, 654 Ave., UE. I come here to speak regarding, as a homeowner of this great city. I'm also a teacher at Jersey City Public School District. I also kind of maybe involved in taxes quite. So I did analysis from Bayonne taxes from 2009 to now. So since 2009, the city has been collecting more taxes than the schools. Even worse now, the cities are collecting $13 million more than the school district. The school board fought many years to get money to, they can come and repair most of the stuff, but the city continued to raise tax, the tax levy over and over and over. The city decided to levy up $13 million more than the school year and property homeowners. The question is, for what? I looked at your budget regarding insurance, I look at new hires, I wanted to see if you got guys like a fire department, that you, you build something new. I can find it if you can let me know where you spending $13 million more than the school tax levy? That's very, um, you cannot have a tax levy higher than the school because it's going to happen with Jersey City happening with the massive tax hike. And I'm going to tell you why. Since 2015, I broke it down, the school district gets from the homeowners taxes, you get 40%, the city get 43. 2016, the district, the school gets 42.1, .01, the city get 42.93. 2017, the school district got 42.5, the city got 42.85. 2018, the school district got 42% and the city got 43%. In 2019, we got 41%, the school district, the city got 43.94. In 2020, the school district got 41%, the, the city got 43.39%. And 2021, 41%, the city got 43%. And in 2022, there's this current year, it is 40% and for the school district and for the city is 43.66%. That is a math of disasters coming up in the next two years, and I'm going to tell you why. As a homeowners, we don't want to see what happened in Jersey City here, but it seems that's going to happen. The school has to raise the tax levy, no matter what. I did analysis, if you want me to email it to you, I emailed it to everybody. Since 2002, the school district tax levy was 48%. In '22, it is 40%. That's a big drop in tax levy. Up a building, you know, we had to repair stuff. I know, I'm not speaking as a school board trustee that I am, but it is not a good thing than two years from now is the taxes have to go up. And I'm going to tell you something real quick. Seven years, Governor Christie and Senator Swinney was in office when they created Bayonne was the least funded school district in New Jersey, number eight out of 599. And that's a fact, that is that. So what happened is, the city knows that the state has to give us more money, you got increase your levy and curdied and continue to reduce our levy. So now how are we going to pave, how are we going to pay for teachers' repairs and stuff like that? So as a homeowner, you guys are homeowners too, it, it's going to affect us. And you cannot, the one, that we have no teachers, so as a teacher, I looked at Bayonne and I'm looking at Jersey City, I worked there, you don't want to see a $1,800 tax increase. But the way that you guys doing with the tax levy, that's, it, it cannot happen. It just, it can't. Mathematically, it cannot happen. Your tax levy cannot be higher than the school district. So we laid the base in here, and the $13 million that you're spending on, I would like to know where you're spending $13 million more this year than the school district, because that should be impossible. But if you have healthcare, you have all the stuff, but 43%, $13 million more in the school district, it's not good, guys. We're in a bad shape. Have a good day. Thank you very much and happy holidays.
Mr. Gonzalez, just to, just to let you know, though, I don't know about your numbers because I don't have them in front of me, but-
I can, I can email it to you, I broke it down.
It's okay, you can email it to me, I, I would love to see it. But the school budget comes to us and we have to levy the residents for the taxes. So we're levying what the school budget asks us to.
But there is also-
So regardless of the percentage, it's what the school board wants us to levy.
But the state also telling us that you owe us $25 million. So now that's, so somebody's lying. So we're not, we're not going to have, we're not going to have this discussion here, but I'm going to tell you something is, the money has to come from somewhere to pay the teachers in three years. That's up to you two, guys, so.
Put it in the budget and send it to us and we'll check it out.
All right, so we will, okay? Thank you.
But as far as us owing the Board of Ed money, I've never heard of that before. Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Again, thank you for your time. So this is just like a few points, just as a resident, community member, a mom, very involved in the school, just some things that, I love to give you guys feedback because you don't know what you don't know, right? So a few things that I think going forward, especially we have a new council, we have things moving forward, and I think we need to move forward as a whole, for sure, is I would love to start to see any redevelopments going forward, and I, I say this on behalf of so many people, how much more can they get involved in our community and what more can they do for us, right? I think we do a lot for them, they get the abatements, they get the breaks, I mean, they get the space. I think they get a lot, I think you guys give a lot, which is great, but I think it's time we start to ask for a little bit more. I've been doing some research across the state, and we're starting to see, a lot of these developers are paying for parks, they're sponsoring schools, they're sponsoring small projects, they're sponsoring shelters, they're sponsoring programs, they're sponsoring camps. I mean, I can go on the list. It would be something for you guys to, to be able to take back to the table and say, hey, you want to build here? Well, guess what, guys, I think this is something our community could use. And it's just a way to kind of bring the community together on all levels, right? We all kind of want to get along and we all want to play ball in the same field. I think we can, but it takes somebody on the other side to say, we need something more from you other than just a big building and taking up some parking spaces, right? I think that's a fair ask. I would love to start to see some of these developments, and they're privately owned, I want to be clear. You don't control what they do, I'm not asking you to do that, I, I know where the line gets drawn. But if you do a lot of this website, if you go to a lot of their websites, they're only promoting our big businesses, they're not promoting our small local businesses. Actually, I have yet to see VJC Boutique on there or Bacon Brew. I mean, I can go on and on. Double Batch Bakery, I can go on and on. If you go to their websites, almost slim to none have any of our local businesses promoted. And I mean, I think it would be a benefit to those residents that live there to know what else we have other than TJ Maxx and Hula Hands. They're great, too. Look at, they support, I don't want to knock them, but I'm just saying, it's another way to keep our local businesses, opening more businesses here because we are one Bayonne, right? So just some feedback to give them. The second part is pediatric urgent care. We do not have a pediatric urgent care in the City of Bayonne. I would love to know exactly how many minors live in this city that need pediatric urgent care. Currently, our hospital does not have a pediatric facility, neither one of them do, not the satellite, not our main hospital. My son is severely medically disabled. If he has to go to urgent care, I have to drive to Staten Island and wait six hours to get a test. Believe it or not, City MD does not provide pediatric tests. We have more and more families coming into the city of Bayonne. I would love to see maybe some partnership with some pediatric urgent care centers because we need those. We need them, our kids need sometimes care, our doctors are overwhelmed, they have tons of kids coming in and out, they have patients they've had for years, and we've got new people moving in, where are these kids going? They're driving to Jersey City, they're driving to Staten Island, how many people in our city don't drive? We see how many people get on the light rail. Is it reasonable to ask somebody to take their kid on a light rail who's sick, hundred-and-three fever, to go to an urgent care center that's not in the city of Bayonne? I think we, as a city, deserve that. So again, I know you guys don't control this, this is feedback that I'm hearing, and I think that our kids and our parents here deserve a place similar. I think Staten Island has one, and I don't quote, I forgot what it's called. It's pediatric, everybody goes there, it's lovely, it's a lovely facility, they do a great job. We need one here. So I don't know what you guys can do, but please keep that in the back of your minds when you're thinking about space and what the city of Bayonne needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's it on that one. Oh, seven is an ordinance for introduction. It's an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter Ten, Taxation and Special Improvement Districts. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez fixing Wednesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Oh, eight is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting the redevelopment plan for Link Logistics located at sixty-nine dash seventy-three Laffontie Way, which is identified as Block four twelve, Lot three, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne in accordance with the municipal land use law. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez fixing Wednesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. La Paluza, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer? Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Oh, nine is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving a financial agreement binding between the city of Bayonne and Seven Hook Road Urban Renewal LLC. And a resolution moved by the council president fixing Wednesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Oh, ten is another ordinance of the city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, approving and authorizing the execution of a reimbursement agreement binding between the city of Bayonne and Seven Hook Road Urban Renewal LLC. And a resolution moved by the council president fixing Wednesday, January eighteenth, in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Eleven is.
I think we're tabling. We are. Yeah.
Madeline, let me just take a moment. I know that Mr. Mazzelli is here in the audience. I did ask for oh eleven and oh twelve to be tabled for next month. You know, and I apologize for the delay, but I was not a party to the council when that was originally passed. And I have a tremendous amount of questions before it is that we approve a pilot for an eighteen-story building on Avenue E. So there's some infrastructure questions, some questions as to improvements to the local community and things of that nature. So we're going to table that till next month when I have an opportunity to meet with council and get some additional answers.
So eleven and oh twelve have been withdrawn temporarily.
And oh thirteen.
And oh thirteen?
Thirteen, oh thirteen.
So it's eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Sorry about that, and thirteen.
Oh, fourteen is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter Two, Administration, and a resolution moved by the council president fixing Wednesday, January eighteenth, in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Oh, fifteen is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter Seven, Traffic, and a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez fixing Wednesday, January eighteenth, in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on that ordinance, Mr. Booker, and the resolution. Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Consent agenda is moved by the council as a whole. It is a resolution ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C one through C four. Any questions on the consent communications? And on the communications, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Officers' reports is a resolution moved by the council as a whole. It is ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and any resolutions incorporated within to be adopted. It covers O R one through O R ten. Any questions on the officers' reports? And on the officers' reports, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Consent resolutions is a resolution moved by the council as a whole, ordering the following resolutions to be adopted. It covers C R one through C R twenty. Any questions on the consent resolutions? And on the consent resolutions, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R one is authorizing the budgetary transfer number two in the calendar year twenty twenty-two budget, which must be read in full. So it is resolved that the budgetary transfers as set forth below pertaining to the calendar year twenty twenty-two appropriations be in the same or hereby authorized, and be further resolved that the comptroller be and is hereby authorized and directed to make said transfers in accordance herewith from business administration salary and wages seventy thousand dollars, to water and sewer other expenses fifty thousand dollars, from finance salary and wages thirty thousand dollars, from law salary and wages forty thousand dollars, to law contracts other expenses fifteen thousand dollars, from streets and road maintenance salary and wages twenty thousand dollars, other public work salary and wages twenty thousand dollars, to buildings and grounds other expenses twenty thousand dollars, from vehicle maintenance salary and wages twenty-five thousand dollars, to vehicle maintenance other expenses twenty thousand dollars, and to reserve for accumulated absences one hundred thousand dollars, in the amount of two hundred and five thousand dollars. Would you like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
Any questions on R one? And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R two is ratifying and accepting the memorandum of understanding between the city of Bayonne and the Bayonne Municipal Supervisory Association, Hudson Council Number Two, for a term of five years commencing January first, twenty twenty-two, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty... I think that year is wrong. Let me just double-check. To December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and authorizing the mayor and/or his designee to execute the same to move by Councilmember La Paluza. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
Any questions on R two? On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R three is a resolution moved by Councilmember La Paluza, amending Resolution twenty-two dash eleven oh nine dash oh fifty-seven, authorizing an agreement with Stack Houlihan and Stack LLC for professional real estate appraisal services in connection with the Hudson County Board of Taxation and the State Tax Court of New Jersey for a period of one year commencing January one, twenty twenty-three, to reflect the total contract amount is not to exceed one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Move it.
You did already. And any questions on R three? And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R four is authorizing the mayor and/or his designee to enter into a tax appeal settlement agreement with Public Service Company, Electric and Gas Company Corp., for Block three, Lots three and three-point-oh-one, in the amount of fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and authorizing the mayor and/or his designee to take any actions necessary to effectuate this resolution and the resulting judgment. Would you like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
Any questions on R four? And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R five is authorizing and directing the planning board to reopen and consider an amendment to the redevelopment plan located at sixty-nine dash seventy-one Hook Road, also identified as Block four sixteen, Lots one-point-oh-one and two-point-oh-two, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Would you like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R six is authorizing and directing the planning board to reopen and consider an amendment to the Eighth Street rehabilitation plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law.
Some move.
A second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R seven is authorizing and directing the planning board of the city of Bayonne to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether certain property located in the Avenue A corridor known as Block three thirty-two, Lots one, six, and seven, and Block three thirty-three, point-oh-one, Lot seven, and Block three seventy-three, Lots one, two, thirteen, and fourteen, within the city constitutes a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R eight is authorizing and directing the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether certain property located in the Constable Hook Road West and East Side redevelopment study areas within the city of Bayonne constitutes a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Can we do the next one as a whole, please?
You did. We talked about that. R nine is moved by the council as a whole, authorizing the execution of a fully awarded grant documents to HUD F Y B twenty-two CP New Jersey, N J oh five nine eight, for an E D I community project grant in the amount of five million dollars for the Russell Golding Park, and authorizing the mayor and law director to execute any documents necessary. Any questions on R nine? And on R nine, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
I just want to say a special thank you to Sue Mack and all the wonderful people who are helping get this grant and make this happen for this park, and I say aye.
R ten is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Hughes Infinity P.C. for professional legal services to act as municipal court public defender for a period, one year commencing January first, for an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. Would you like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on R ten, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R eleven is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to Agreement Number, calendar year twenty-one oh sixty-two, with New Jersey Humane Corp., for an animal control officer and shelter services to execute the second one-year period commencing January one, twenty twenty-three, for an additional amount of eighty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cent, making the total contract amount two hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-six cent. Would you like to move it?
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
And on R eleven, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R twelve is approving Chapter one fifty-nine, Number four, in the calendar year twenty twenty-two budget, and seeking permission of the Division of Local Government Services to approve the assertion of items of revenue.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R thirteen is authorizing a contract with Rachel Michelle Oil Company through the state contract T one eighteen forty-five to provide diesel fuel for the city vehicles in the amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R fourteen is also a contract with Rachel Michelle Oil Company through state contract T zero zero eight-three to provide gasoline for city vehicles in the amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Some move.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R fifteen is accepting the best practices inventory as prepared by the CFO, Donna Maurer. Would you like to accept it?
Some move.
Second.
And on that one, on acceptance, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R sixteen is rejecting the bid received for the Sergeant James J. Shea Memorial Shooting Rage Building modifications pursuant to NJSA forty A colon eleven dash thirteen point two. The bid exceeds substantially cost estimated for the goods and services.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
R seventeen is awarding the contract two for Cleanup Inc. of Northburg in New Jersey for the twenty twenty-three roadway improvement Phase One for the total bid amount of eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
And I have a couple of add-ons that were added. The first one is from the Honorable James M. Davis, reappointing the following individuals to the Urban Enterprise Zone Development Court Board. Would you like to receive?
Some move.
Second.
And on the appointment, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R2 authorizes the business administrator and/or his or her designee to advertise for grant writing, management, and consulting services utilizing the competitive contracting process pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-4.1 et cetera.
Move it.
Second.
And on that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R3 is authorizing the business administrator and/or his or her designee to advertise for 5G and other telecommunication consulting services utilizing the competitive contracting process.
Some move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R4 is authorizing the business administrator and/or his or her designee to advertise for information technology maintenance, maintenance support, and procurement consulting services utilizing the competitive contracting process.
Some move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
I have nothing else, but I understand Mr. Coffey does.
First, back in October... Back in October, Director Cooper came up and outlined why it was necessary to enter into an emergency computer maintenance and upgrade for software associated with the city's citywide public safety communication system that should have been on in the November meeting. I don't recall why it didn't get on, but it didn't get on. So, this is a resolution that would, is consistent with what Director Cooper came and talked about in October. It calls for a, through a state contract with Safeware Inc. of Baltimore, Maryland, through a cooperative partnership with AER Consulting Services for emergency services and maintenance through the end of this year in the amount of $312,500, which is what Chief Cooper had indicated to the council at that time, bless you, was going to be necessary, and then for additional two years, bless you, at a cost of $227,272.73 for year two, and $170,454.55 for year three. The Safeware Inc. has an Omni Cooperative Purchasing Contract number 4400008468, and